I'm the City Council Board. It's a little at seven, but we always like to wait for Rodney with Channel 3 so that the citizens of Buchanan can watch on Channel 3 as well. He's been patient with us before, so we can be patient with him. Before we get started, as we normally do, we will start with a moment of silent prayer meditation and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here on a Thursday night for our regular City Council meeting, even in this nice, beautiful weather we're having. But from what I understand, this weekend, we might be looking forward to some spring. So if we give a little more patience, we will get there. I'm looking on our agenda, and I don't see any recognized guests, but I look on my sign-up sheet, and I have one that would like to speak, and that's Mr. Robert Osborne regarding sound. Mr. Osborne, would you like to speak now, or would you want to wait some time?
Now's fine.
That's okay, sir. You got the floor.
I just want to thank the mayor and City Council for taking a few minutes to hear Those of you who don't know me, I spent 24 and a half years in the military. I'm a disabled vet. One of the disabilities I have is hearing loss. I've lost almost all the hearing in my left ear. And when I come to City Council, I would really like to hear more of what's going on. Problem is, I can't. And if you look around even tonight, you know, most of the people who come to these meetings are older generation people that have hearing problems. And when we can't hear the council speak, or the council does business, you know, it's not good for the citizens. So I'll just, I know Council Simon has mentioned, brought up a sound system a couple of times, but I would just like to reiterate on that, that I think the council needs a sound system so we can hear what's going on. I know, Mayor, it's really hard to hear you sometimes. It's hard to hear Councilman Thomas sometimes. Mary and Ron, y'all are loud, very loud. But Pam, most of the time, you can hear her, and sometimes it's hard to hear Robin. But, you know, as a citizen with a hearing disability, and it is a disability, so keep in mind that by not giving the sound system, that could be considered discrimination against those who have hearing loss. So I just wanted to bring that for our council's attention, and see if y'all consider getting the sound system so we can hear better out here in the crowd. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Osborne brings up a very good point. We've been discussing this now, and I've tried to tune up or turn up the volume for my speech volume. But what is the pleasure of council on this? I know it's not part of the agenda, but do you want us to explore? I can have someone take a look at and bring forward propositions or proposals for a sound system, just to give you an idea of where we're at now, as opposed to what may have been done in future.
Sir, I've wanted that for a couple of years, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I've asked for it twice now, and I even offered to pay for it out of money that I would be compensated for by the City Council. And it was just, I really appreciate Robert bringing that up.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
And the reason I speak so loud is because I can't hear. So I can't hear myself. I have a hearing loss also, but I've always spoke loud. That's made it worse.
All right. I think it's time we seriously take a look at that, and as we're talking budget discussion anyway, we'll have another meeting. I'll have some numbers for you, okay?
Great.
Mr. Osborne, thank you again for bringing that to our attention, and I think we'll see what we can do about that. All right. I see no one else signed up to speak, so we'll move on into our agenda, and we have our Department and Board reports. We'll start off with Michael Doss, our City Administrator. That's right. He has a family issue, so he's been excused. We'll move on to Mr. Jerry Arnold, Street and Waste Department. Mr. Arnold, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello. I didn't hear you, Dave.
Hello.
The Consolidated Public Works Board met on the 28th of February. The Board approved a request from the Almost Have a Barbecue Bash for their event on June the 17th and 18th. Again, there's more meetings to be scheduled to work out some of the details. The Board approved a request for the Seventh Annual Arts Festival at Jawbone Park on September 10th, 2016, from noon to 8:00 p.m. The Board also approved a request from Chapel Hill Church to conduct a sunrise service at Jawbone Park on the 27th at 7:00 a.m. Approved another request from Chapel Hill Church to conduct an Easter egg hunt at the city park on March the 20th from 10:00 a.m. until noon. John Giegax presented some suggestions for ways to spruce up the city. Discussed possible changes to parking in Lot 3. There was no decision made on that. Discussed the removal of loading zones, and actually had discussion on all loading zones in the city, and were to gather more information, and presented the next meeting. I presented the cemetery mowing bid documents. That contract is up for bid right now, with a bid opening at the next consolidated meeting. Also presented information on the sidewalk repair replacement initiative program as the mayor came up with it, and the mayor had asked me to elaborate a little bit on that program. Again, it's in the infancy stages of development, but it is a program, as you know, we have an ordinance on the books that make a budding property or budding sidewalks the responsibility of the property owners. So one of the ways, and the summary of this program actually reads, "The Sidewalk Repair and Replacement Initiative Program is designed to help offset the cost to the property owner of repairing public sidewalks above budding private property. Program will provide all design labor to repair or replace a public sidewalk abutting private property. The property owner would be responsible for reimbursing the City of Buchanan for all materials needed to repair the portion of sidewalk abutting their property. Program will utilize current city staff to provide the labor, and will be evaluated for efficiency on a yearly basis. The scheduling of repairs will be made as discretion of the Streets Commissioner. In order to qualify for this program, the property owner must first be notified of violation of Ordinance 193. This program is in addition to the current sidewalk assistance program." So it's not taking away the current program that we have for the 50% funding. However, with that program, we give an estimate from within our department as to what it would cost us to repair or replace a section of sidewalk. That estimate, with us doing the labor and by being able to combine that with other jobs that we may have for concrete, is significantly less than what a contractor would give you an estimate for doing that. So this program, if we notify, or Vince, and again, that's part of the, part of the program that's not ironed out yet, is how we notify, how we identify, and the violation of that ordinance. So once we do that, notify the property owner, this gives the property owner some relief of financial burden by just having to be responsible for the actual materials and not the total cost of the sidewalk.
Where are you going? Did everybody understand that?
I have a question about it.
All right. Then I just want to make sure everybody heard what he said, so that we're all on board with that. All right, go ahead, Mr. Report, and we'll come back to questions.
The Waste Collection Board met this evening, and we presented an executive contract for Waste disposal, our annual contract with S&amp;S Grading. Also opened equipment bids for the West Virginia DEP REIT grant program, and presented the 2016 April Mega Chime Month activity schedule. And if you'd bear with me, I'd like to just read through that real quickly, so everyone will have that on their schedule. The celebration of recycling at Crossroads will be conducted April 22nd and 23rd, on the 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on the 23rd from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. after Friday and Saturday. Also, every Saturday in April will be a free day at the transfer station. Now, the April 2nd, 16th, and the 30th will be for city residents only. And April 9th and 23rd will be for county residents, and those times will be from 7:30 a.m. until 11:45 a.m. And only current subscribers to the City of Buchanan Waste Collection Service will be eligible to take advantage of the free days. Appliances with Free On and CRT televisions are excluded from the cleanup activities. All persons wishing to take advantage of cleaning up their property and disposing of material free of charge must present proper identification to the staff. Proper identification will consist of current City of Buchanan Waste Collection receipt in conjunction with photo identification. Only materials accepted at the landfill will be taken. Tires will not be accepted during this event. Tires are collected on bulky goods collection each month. There will be a limit of two pickup truckloads of acceptable material per customer for the entirety of the cleanup event. The event hours will correspond with the normal operational hours of the transfer station, which is 7:30 a.m. until 11:45 a.m. Call 304-472-4443 if you have any questions. And again, I stress, it is solely for, if the City of Buchanan stops in front of your house each week with a waste collection truck, picks up your garbage, you are entitled to take advantage of the free days. That does not include customers of the transfer station.
Free days at the transfer station are for the city residents, or what?
For the city residents are April 2nd, 16th, and 30th.
Okay. And the in-between of the counties?
Of the counties, yes.
Thanks. Jerry, is there a time when, my recollection is that in sometime beginning of the year and then at the end of the fall, you have a time where you, people can put out like their limbs and things like that for pickup? Is that, do we still do that, or not?
Actually, it's, that is, that is the weekly yard debris collection day.
Okay. When's that start weekly again?
Well, weekly, weekly is during leaf season.
Okay.
And we currently run it through the summer for grass. I believe we do the grass on a weekly basis, too.
And you have to call in, tell them that you need a pickup?
You can, you can call in, you know, in the spring, and ask to be put on a permanent list, and every, every week, the guys will come by and see if you have anything out or not.
Is it Friday?
It is on Fridays, yes. Yes.
So it's not dissimilar in bulky goods pickup?
No, no. It's separate. The Street Department collects the yard debris. Balky goods is a waste collection venture. The, are there any questions you want to finish the report before we take questions on that?
Go ahead, Peter.
Transfer station transactions, we did 1,940 transactions and a total tonnage of 1,311 tons. Grand total monies for the month was $109,725.77. Recycling received 71.87 tons are on the Street Department report. We began work on the sidewalk along Madison Street, if you haven't noticed. I'll continue that. Also, the Batium Offport will be starting excavation on that, along with the sidewalk project. We continue to work as weather permits on the playground installation equipment. We've got the layout down, and we'll be continuing to work on that. The crew, I've got a crew that is going around to paint all the park restrooms, walk trail included, all the jawbone interiors, kind of spruce up our restroom facilities a little bit. Also, we're working, matter of fact, worked today with the curb machine in our shop, so trying to work some of the bugzile of it, get acquainted with it, figure that thing out. So we're working with that, working on that. We'll be going on the annual spring cleaning of the cemetery, March the 14th through the 18th, and again, trying to get that in before Easter. And we are, I've got a crew that is, so if you see them in the neighborhood, you'll know what they're doing. They're going around and straightening signposts, doing a sign assessment for me, and we'll be throughout the summer going through and replacing signs, repairing signposts, as we have an extra half hour here, hour there. And we're going to go to all round type signposts, and the ones that we currently have out there, we're going to do away with those U channels, those ugly U channel posts. Also looking to combine our stops with our streets to eliminate some of the clutters on, the clutter on the corners, and those round posts will be painted flat black to match the other posts in town. So again, we will get, as we can, with the, with the workforce that we have, we're going to start that project this summer.
Is there any way you can prevent the signs from being stolen?
We use, we use tamper-proof bolts and nuts, and they still get everything.
The painters we put out, those for in the summer, those orange looking things, I'd like to see those painted black.
I will mention that to Mr. Barber. Continue to work on the walk trail lighting grant, which you have a resolution in your package for us, making people stick around for any questions on that as well. That's all I have for a report, Mayor.
All right, Jerry. I do want to, now that you mentioned the signage and the signs on all the corners, it was brought to our attention by a gentleman that is in the audience with us today. He brought it to Consolidated. It's not the first time he brought it to Consolidated, but he felt the uniformity of all of our signs and our street addresses and all of that was not copacetic to a very clean-looking city. So I appreciate the fact that you and your department have taken that initiative on to address that and get rid of those U-channel things as well, so that they're all uniform and make us look much better. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you know that the Planning Commission is working on that as part of our process, reviewing the park signs, street signs, all of that, along with our parking. We're, we're working on that. And we haven't got with you yet, Jerry, because we haven't gotten my report yet, and we've just finished up.
Well, he's not doing the sign with the name. He's doing the poles and all of the things that you attach a sign to. And that's not something that the Planning Commission would do.
Mary, we have, for instance, your, your street name's not going to change, so we'll, we'll put that sign up. If it's faded, we'll replace that sign. But in doing so, if there's a stop sign on that corner as well, we will try to combine the stop sign with the street signs to, one, eliminate some of the clutter, to reduce the amount of poles that we have and maintain those. So that's the kind of thing we're looking at. Plus, being uniform, as the mayor said, with the type of pole we're using. Over the years, we've used round poles, we've used U channels. U channels are quicker, easier, but I'm working on a inset, a ground inset for the round poles with a breakaway as well, so.
I noticed, Jerry, that even on my street, I know somebody ran it over, I guess, in a wreck or whatever, but anyhow, the post itself is real high. Are they supposed to be a certain?
Could go eight feet for the, for the street signs.
Street signs, really?
So thank you, Mr. Giegax, for that. Council, any other questions or comments for Jerry on his report? Yes, Mr. Peter.
Yeah, Jerry, I'd like to, a clarification on, on the sidewalk projects. The owner is responsible for the sidewalk and everything, and you're going to do the, the maintenance, the work and everything. Now, what if the damage to the sidewalk is caused by something that belongs to the city? Is the owner responsible for that, or is that prorated according to what the damages are? Because like the tree that I cut down in front of my house on City Right Away, but it tore the heck out of the sidewalk. Now, in the future, will that be considered and perhaps prorated to the property owner?
I think, I think eventually, Ron, council's going to have to tackle the whole issue of the sidewalk ordinance. I think this is simply a means to offset what it says, offset the cost immediately. Now, as far as the tree, this program does not take into account any concession for tree-related damage, if it was a city tree in your instance. I also think that, that a property owner has a valid complaint if, for instance, there is parking on your street and people park on the sidewalk in front of your house, and we do not force them not to park on the sidewalk in front of your house. Florida Street's a perfect example of that. So again, you know, there's, there's no, to say that this program will be perfect and take care of all the issues that will mark. I don't know that you can write an ordinance that will be perfect and take care of all the issues. I'm saying, I'm looking at it from what's fair and working with what we have.
I understand. Talking about Florida Street, one of the widest streets we've got residential in the city. More people park on this sidewalk than any other street in town on Florida Street.
Isn't that illegal?
It is, and we've instructed our police officers to ticket those people, but I don't think they do.
I got a warning ticket.
Well, a warning ticket.
Well, good. Well, I didn't do anything. I only took one warning ticket, and I knew.
I see, I see the same car every day parked on the sidewalk as I come downtown, the same ones. And it's the same way with parking following the wrong way on the wrong side of the street. You know, we took care of it for about three months, and then they stopped doing it.
Well, and Jerry brings up a valid point. You know, we talk about sidewalks and the difference in all the different years. Well, cars weren't as big back then with these little streets. We really need to look at all of our streets need to be widened. I understand why some of them park on the sidewalk, because I lived on South Ford, it did not have off-street parking, and I lost at least three left-side rearview mirrors, three at least. And a couple of cars even came and came across the side of my car, so.
That was just targeting you, Mayor.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised. It was maybe four hours anybody. Yes, ma'am.
A while back, people came to and talked to us about the sidewalks, and we walked around and looked down that type of thing. Are we moving toward any of that, taking care of that?
Still an issue, ma'am, yes.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And we have allocated for the budget for that, for the ADA compliance. It's a matter now of targeting and having a plan for which streets and how we're going to do it.
Can I ask, Jerry?
Go ahead.
When the, and Jerry, and not just about parking, but signage, you had said, now, let me make sure, if there's any, you want their signs, street signs or whatever, we make any changes, even warning signs or whatever, to be reflective at night.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We, with the, with the trial of the new street signs and Ken, as he lives on College Avenue, but notice, they were pretty good for the first couple of years, but then the reflectivity went away. Now, there's nothing that says as regulatory that we have to have reflective signs, however, I like them.
I do, too.
I think emergency services like them. And, you know, so, so I think that anything we do needs to be looked at as a reflective sign, Mayor, yes.
And, and one more question. Coming off, you get off the four lane, and you're coming in, and you got that big transfer station there, you know, and all that electric stuff. We can't post signs out there, can we, the cities? Or can we?
With, with approval from the DOH on their right-of-way.
On the right-of-way? Okay.
Not onto the electrical companies?
No, 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 not all that. I'm talking about directional signs or whatever. We come up with something.
Require a permit from, from the.
Approval of DOH. And, and is that something we should coordinate with you?
Me, Jay, Jay, Court Sullivan as well.
I'm not here tonight.
But yes, but yes, Mary, a lot of us can work with that.
You'll be on the list of four other DOH notifications that are now in the district board, so you'll be at the bottom of that list.
The whole issue about Department of Highway is in that court case up in Morgantown. You know, they, they want to, they want to stop trucks from going through, I can't remember which street it is, but that, the implications of that ruling could be very significant for all cities, municipalities.
True.
Pam? Yeah, I forgot. Where are you putting the new parking in at Spring Street, down, down there in Lot 3? Is it Lot 3? Is it easily accessible, gone across the street for a wheelchair to go over in there? Is there like an AD, is there like that thing, like it's on the corners? I haven't looked at.
Yes, yes, all of the, all of the ramps, it was all designed by Jay to be ADA compliant, and all of the truncated domes are in all the ramps. Now, there is an offset at one of the entrances to the parking lot, which has some patchy material in there right now, because that was put in with the thought of doing an over the way on Spring Street at some time, to bring it up to those entrances. But yes, it is compliant.
And we discussed at Consolidated about putting up an extra handicap parking area on Spring Street. Has that been done, or is that?
I don't know if the guys got it put this week. I, I get it to Brad Monday to, to give to the guys to do. Now, you know, again, that's going to involve painting curbs, so I don't know if they got it done with the weather and the sidewalk that they were working on down there on Madison Park.
So you're talking about adding more handicap parking places?
Central area lighting that everyone posted to the meeting, and said they need one more.
That's good. I like that. Very good.
I was, I was not sure. I might have drove back too fast, or they're just going to be back-to-back?
Yes.
Okay.
The one that, we had an issue with a meter there, and I think I alluded to that in the meeting.
Taking a meter.
And that was the spot that we were looking at, and it was the next one.
I got one last one. I'm sorry, Jerry.
No, I'm finished this time.
All right. I thought she was, or I would have said, I'm sorry, Jerry. You know where the, you know where Jawbone is, and then the?
Yes.
Where the old Dollar General store was, and that parking lot there? Am I nuts, or did, did there used to be parking meters right there?
You're nuts.
Because I come by there. Really?
I'm sorry, Mayor. No. No, it wasn't.
I wrote it down, and I was getting ready to present that to planning the next time we get together.
Since Jawbone, since Jawbone, since the.
It's got two hour parking signs there.
Yes.
But was there ever parked? No, it wasn't.
It was, it was a lot that had meters, that had islands. You had islands with meters on them. It was a parking lot. But, no, I don't believe there was any meters. That was, that was part of the original park.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Arnold. Any other questions or comments? I thought I saw somebody else's hand up in that potty of stuff. Somebody's handle up for Jerry. Okay. Thank you, Jerry, very much. We appreciate all you work. Jay Holland, City Engineer, in your package spoke to Jay's information.
On the first three pages after your yellow pager is my brief report. I'll go through them quickly. A lot of them are wrapping up. The FEMA generators, we're going through the tests, the required video and photography of the startup procedures. All the generators are working properly. The quick connections are working properly. We've signed off on those. We should be wrapping that project up within the next three weeks, pending FEMA's final inspection and walkthrough. Water treatment plant, the mayor executed a couple of documents today that will be attached to the standard form of agreement, which go into the official contract documents, and we're hoping to issue the notice to proceed a couple of weeks early, hopefully next week. A contractor was on site yesterday, taking some measurements and pictures so that they can start ordering the equipment that's going to be necessary in part of the project, so I'm really happy there. Nothing on McDonald Lane widening project. Source water protection plan, we will have our final meeting next Monday at 3:30 or 4:00 o'clock to go over the plan. We've asked all the team members, including myself and Tom, to come up with their comments, reviews. Tetra Tech has inserted those comments into the plan. Next, this Monday's meeting is really just a formality to go over and see if there's any last-minute provisions before we submit it to the DHHR for their review and approval, and we're in good shape there. The SCADA system for the water distribution system is currently being worked on. As of yesterday, they had two sites completed, the airport booster station and the St. Joe's water storage tank. We wanted one booster station and one storage tank to see if all this stuff would operate correctly. By the end of next week, they have all the water distribution completed, and then they'll start on the treatment plant. That's going to take about a week, and we're going to be about a week behind, but I'm not too concerned about that at this point, Tom. The public safety complex, finally, some good news. I think we're going to be wrapping it up at the end of next week. We put down the carpet and floor levering material today, and Cuffman Corporation is going to come back starting next week and put in kitchen ad, connect the water and sewer lines, do some baseboard trim, some cleaning up, and I'll give the mayor to put that bad boy to rest and, and turn it over to the Fire and Police Department officially. The Gateway West Transportation Alternative Project, the reason I bring this up in here is because it deals with some of the resolutions you have in there. That application is due next Tuesday, and before we can submit that application, and it also ties into Jerry's, we have to pass a resolution saying that if this project is funded, that the city will contribute 20% of the funding to the project. is funded, that the city will contribute 20% of the funding to the project, just like we did in Gateway East. This is just, the way we do it in the city is we supply the material and the manpower and the equipment, and we pay for all the invoices and then we get reimbursed 80%. The reason for this resolution is because there were certain agencies in the past that said they were going to contribute money and they didn't, and so now this is their safety net. You must pass a resolution saying that you will support the project before this will be considered. So, in order to meet the timeframes for the deadlines of next Tuesday, I had to get this resolution in front of you all. Again, that project's worth about just under $400,000, and we're going to have to contribute just under 80. So, I'm really happy about that. The raw water intake generator project, it's one of those, another one that I'm going to be working on, probably dedicate all my time to that in the next couple of weeks because that deadline is also due March 31st, and that's about a $225,000 project, and it's grant money, we don't have to contribute anything at this time. So, I don't want to pass that up, so I'm going to dedicate a lot of time to that. Jerry mentioned the North Buchanan City Park, they're working on that. Going to page three, the water treatment plant sludge replacement pump, again, we need to apply our water departments and our sewer departments, all our departments for that matter, but we do a, we take a proactive approach, and as part of this, we're replacing some pumps that are almost 30 years old, one of them's acting up, decides when it wants to work, so we just decided to go ahead and do that. We have those monies available to us, we put prohibitive, preventive maintenance monies in our budget every year, and so we're upgrading that. It's a little bit behind schedule because we've had some concerns and issues, but we've got those straightened out and hopefully have that done in the next couple of weeks. Jerry talked about the Bochi Court and sidewalk improvement project, so I'll not go into too much detail, other than one of the trees that was planted about two or three years ago is going to have to be removed or relocated because it's over some infrastructure that is going to be a cause of concern, and nothing to report on the Atlantic Coast Pipeline. Correspondence continues, no decisions have been made. I know that a couple counties and state, federal lands were successful in getting them to relocate off of some sensitive lands, do some flora and fauna. We'll just see what happens. We're still monitoring it, and there's lots of other things in the works, but that's my quick and brief report.
Ladies and gentlemen, you got any questions for comments for Mr. Holland?
I do.
Yes, sir?
Jay, you've made several presentations about the river cleanup.
Yes, I do.
When do you think that, when will be our first initiative on doing that?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, I was going to bring it up at the next monthly meeting, but I'll go over it briefly. We've had some, you know, we had our site inspection, and it went pretty well, even though they said there's some things, things that need to be done, including the river. But, the inspector had indicated that it may be worth our time and effort, and Mike and I had a detailed discussion with this today, and we've had some discussions in the past, it may be worth our time to have a hydraulic study done on that four and a half miles of river. Ballpark estimates, about $100,000, but if it comes back favorably, we won't have to do anything. No tree removal, no bank removal, because it's a healthy river, it really is, but it's just, you know, according to the guidelines established in the mid-'60s, it doesn't meet the criteria. So, we could spend $100,000 and then wipe our hands of it and just continue, you know, not to trash it up anymore, but to monitor it and keep it in the conditions that we're doing now, or it could come back non-favorably, meaning that then we'd have to do the freshwater mussel survey and the Virginia spirea flora and fauna survey, and those can only be done during certain times of the year, and that's why I mentioned this to Michael, because those deadlines are coming up. And then, and once those things come back, we're hoping they come back negative in that we don't find any of that, because if we do find some of that stuff, then we have to relocate the freshwater mussels, and we have to take some protective measures for the Virginia spirea plant that grows, and it's been found north of the dam, more than likely it's going to be south of the dam. So, it could be a $100,000 project, and nothing else has to be done according to the hydraulic study, or it can be about a $1.2 million project depending on. And to answer your question, Dave, the hydraulic study would be done this year with the money we've set aside, and I've currently asked FEMA if there's any funding available, and because it's two different government agencies, I can't borrow from one government agency to pay for another government AD study, so they won't respond to that. There may be some money out there, I'm going to search for that, but if we did the study this year, it's $100,000, and then we reinvest in the kitty, you know, put some money aside for the studies. If it comes back negative, you know, or positive in this case, in that those two things are present, then we would, you know, take the proper mitigative measures for that next year, and then actually begin the cleanup efforts in year three. It just, stuff just keeps coming, and.
Well, let's assume, let's assume that the study comes back favorably from the vantage point, that we don't have to spend $1.2 million for the four and a half miles. Dr. Downer came to the council, and, you know, how do you, how do we address his kind of issues?
Two separate projects, because the loop is not part of it. And we've gone over this, and some of those trees, some of the people's property, and this is where, you know, some research would have to be done, not only by the property owners, but by the city, some people's properties extend across Old Elkins Road and down to the riverbank. It is their property, and some of those trees are coming off of their property, it's not city-owned property. And so, I don't know how we want to handle that. I mean, you know, it's going to take a little bit more research into that, because it may be their trees that are in the river and not the city's or anybody else's.
So you need a collaborative effort.
Yes, and I mean, you know, I'm tackling the one, we haven't forgot about it, you know, and Jerry's here, and you know, I know that, I've said in the past, I wish Jerry would have stayed to comment, but I mean, I know that it's on his stove, it's just not been, you know, high up on the list. As spring comes, he's got a lot of projects he's got to work on, and, you know, he's here, he can comment, but I mean, we've talked about that numerous times, and I mean, there is a plan, but it's going to take a little bit more research as to who actually owns where and whose responsibility that would be.
And well, I just think that needs to be real clear to the property owners, that, you know, we're just not sitting on our hands, we need something, a little bit more research with their cooperation.
Can you explain to me and other people that might know what you're talking about, about that hydraulic whatever?
Well, the hydraulic study and analysis, it's how quickly water moves through there, how high water gets up, to what limits, you know, in a flooding event, how far out it would stretch left and right of the riverbank. And these hydraulic models are prepared using past data and current data and new mapping information from CAD and LiDAR and surveys. They'll do another, you know, and actually, you know, modeling and everything has gotten better in the last 50 years, it's more accurate, and that's why the Army Corps of Engineers inspector thought it may benefit us, because, you know, that model was from the mid-'60s. Today's model may be so much more better, and that, you know, I don't want to hedge my bet and say favorably, because it could go either way. Because we were that close, he was saying, based upon his past experience, and he used to do hydraulic modeling for the Corps, still works for him, but in a different department now. And, you know, if it comes back favorably, then we're lucky. I mean, we don't have to do anything more. Again, we're not doing this on purpose, we're not letting the trees fall in and not remove them, it's just that, as part of the project conditions in the '60s, we had to keep it free of debris and trees and vegetation and.
Do they look at 100-year floods or 50-year floods?
They look at the 100 years. You know, you plan for worst, you know, and they, and they, I think it was the 1930, and these are the 1918 or the 1933 flood, and that's what they based their model on in the '60s, but of course now 85 was bigger than both of those, so they'll use that information and incorporate it into the study. Mr. Pew.
Thank you, sir. Exactly, who does the searching and everything for the freshwater mussels?
There are engineering and consulting firms that must be certified by the state, it's just not engineering, any engineering firm, they have to have degrees and doctorates, you know, that specialize in this stuff, and the two firms that I've contacted to get estimates from have all the necessary paperwork. I talked to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and they gave me the people in West Virginia and the surrounding states for the Virginia spirea, then I talked to the Fish and Wildlife in Elkins for the freshwater mussel surveyors.
Can we eat the mussel?
Allez, ergo.
Not if they're protected.
Only if they're found, I guess, you know, then they have to be relocated, and unfortunately, the freshwater mussels will settle where the lowest, the slowest-moving water is, and that's normally where there's debris across the river bottom, which is normally the trees and the tires and all the stuff.
We really can find it.
So, I mean, that's.
And part of the problem is that anything that we do on the river that involves going into the river has to have an H&amp;H study according to FEMA, so that's the big deal. Anything we put, we keep talking about the handicap fishing ramp, we have, they have to have, somebody has to pay for an H&amp;H study, as you've heard, they are not inexpensive to do. For them to turn around and tell you, you can't do it, so you could be investing a lot of money for something that you just can't do.
Just the study for the handicap places around $15,000 to $17,000?
I have no doubt.
It's not going to be inexpensive, no.
Mary, you had a question?
I'm a property owner.
Yes, you are.
Well. What's turning now? I'm a property owner, and the river's right there, and a big tree falls out of my yard. Am I responsible for getting that tree out of that river?
It's your sidewalk.
It's your property.
How do we go about telling people to do that?
Well, again, that's where I prefaced it, where we need to do a little more research.
Okay.
You know, tax maps and state DOH right-of-way drawings and surveys all have to be compared, you know, get all the parties involved, you know, and analyze that data, you know, we have attorneys, they would have to have it, just to make sure that everything's on the up and up, and yes, we can definitely say without a doubt, that is your property, or it's in question, and then maybe it's a collaborative, you know, with both parties involved. But, two separate ones, I mean, I wish I could have included that, the bypass, the loop, but it's not part of the flood control project, so, you know, those efforts and those monies that are dedicated to that can solely be used for that and not the loop.
Because you know, and I know, what it's going to cost to have a big old tree that's 100 years old that fell in the river.
Well, the truth of the matter is, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would have to contract out for that. There is no way that, we have the skill, the labor to do that, but I don't know if you watch some of these reality shows or whatever, there are people that, this is a very, could very, be a very dangerous prospect or job for anyone to do, so that's why you would, in this case, contract out to specialists.
Specialists, yes.
But Jerry can probably elaborate a little more.
Mayor, I guess the first, the first thing that I would say is, I'll use Jawbone Run and as my, for instance, I guess. Currently, property owners on Jawbone Run are responsible to maintain the banks of that tributary. Again, that means that any tree obstruction, shrubbery, debris is the property owner's responsibility. If you look at the tax maps, typically, the property on one side of the creek runs to the center of the creek, property on the other side runs to the center, same with the river. Now, we just, this year, Sam Ludlow worked on a, it was actually a release, I don't remember if he worked with you on that, Scott?
Yes.
But a release to allow city personnel to be able to go in and help out people that have, we did one up on Jawbone that had a stump in it, we were able to go in there at the backhoe, and of course, we just charged them time and labor for removal.
The water was low and all that, yeah.
But, now back to the river and the problems brought up over there in the loop that Jay was talking about, and the mayor kind of alluded to, we do not have the equipment to remove those trees. The other issue is access, access to those locations, essentially, if we go in there as a city department and remove a tree over there, there's a couple of street right-of-ways that come down through the river, but we're trespassing at that point in time on someone else's property. So, anything that we destroy, of course, we're liable for. The other issue is, we're not allowed to put anything in the river such as a chainsaw to cut a tree, so it's very restrictive on us as well. It's kind of going to be, I would say, see it being something similar to what I just brought up with the sidewalk initiative program. It's probably going to be, there's going to be cases where the city can assist property owners, if their property extends into the river, with a shared cost of labor, and just as we're doing with Sam's, the release that Sam and Scott worked on for the Jawbone instance. But, ultimately, there's going to be property owners that are going to have to hire contractors to remove trees from the river. I think the authority of the council is, or the, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, would be the actual enforcement. If it poses a threat to flooding or foreflooding, I think this body's function would be the enforcement of getting that tree removed, not necessarily removing the tree.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other questions for Mr. Holland on his report?
Are you done?
Are you done? I heard you say you were done.
I am finished, sir.
You're done?
No, turkeys are done, people are finished.
Are you finished, are you finished?
I am finished, I am finished.
Thank you, Mr. Holland.
Scott McClure, City Attorney.
Yeah, Scott McClure, City Attorney. Just a couple of brief issues. On the agenda tonight is the head and lease with Altice S.A., doing business at Sutton Links, so we worked on that with the Sutton Links people, Michael Kellerman, and of course, we've worked with Jay and a few others. Jay, did you want to speak on that issue?
Before, I forgot, it was a little side note there, no, not on that, Scott, but we need to go into executive session for about five or 10 minutes after we're done. It's not on the agenda, but I only got the answer yesterday from FEMA, and it's regarding property, so if I could just have your all's time for about five or 10 minutes after the regular scheduled meeting to go into executive session to discuss property.
About objection, or is, could you be the same, you think, Jay?
We'll talk about it then.
Okay. All right, Mr. McClure, go ahead, Scott.
Yes, okay, so that's, the head and lease is on the agreement, I've got a voicemail from Kellerman, the lease agreement is acceptable, but there's one small modification, we have the old Exhibit B attached to the lease agreement, mayor, this needs to come off and it's replaced by this one, that was done by.
Dale Bennett.
Dale Bennett, yes. So this comes off, right?
That one will come off, yes.
Exhibit B.
So, the real Exhibit B now is actually this.
The partition survey.
So, the next move is to negotiate the franchise agreement. I suspect that'll move relatively quickly, so this first, and then hopefully in short order, we will have the details of the franchise agreement worked out, had that before council. I think you all remember, we did this six-month extension, Councilman Pew did not like that very well, but we're going to, we're going to get wrapped up in that timeframe and move forward from there. I thought we had the draft of the adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code. Is that?
Are you talking about the fees?
Yes, sir.
That is a draft, but that's, isn't that down here?
I didn't see it on the, I couldn't find it in my pocket.
The lease agreement? No, the permit fees.
Yes.
The permit fees.
The draft should be, but it should be part of, should be part of strategic issues and discussion. Did you send everyone in?
I thought we put that, I don't know, I'll go back and check, but we'll get copies up before the end of the evening.
We'll have the discussion anyway, we can't have the discussion, we can't make any decisions, it's just not actually on the agenda, but we can have a discussion on that then a little bit.
You're talking about this?
Yes. Members, we can, we're coming back. I don't know how I didn't get on the agenda as a draft, because we weren't going to make a decision anyway, this was just for me to.
It wasn't.
Yeah, I remember I sent that email out, and I said, first reading, I remember the mayor responded back and said, hey, I think this is a draft, and I guess we just didn't get it in the package. Anyhow, we've been working on that, and so we'll stand ready to do whatever required on the permit fees, so, that's where we're at. The things, again, the thing we're working on coming up is going to be the franchise agreement. I think at some juncture, whenever it's feasible, I think we ought to discuss a, potentially an amendment to the charter regarding the 30-day wait for the enactment of ordinances. I know we've talked about several times, but there's a technique, if there's no objection, to amending the charter through a ordinance reading with public notice, and as I said before, I don't think the 30-minute, the 30-day requirement is useful in 2016, so that's something that we'd like to put together, somebody would instruct me to do so, or take a look at it, maybe provide a draft on that for discussion and go wherever we can on it.
Counsel, do you understand what he's asking for? Instead of going to three readings, for instance, if it's a one, two, or three reading, instead of waiting the 30-day enacting, it gets enacted upon vote.
Upon passage.
Yeah.
Scott, they have a public advertisement on.
Unless there's any objection, I would ask Scott to go ahead and draft up such a.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
And then bring it back to us for consideration.
It's a charter amendment under. It's a charter amendment under 848, which is called an alternative, alternative plan.
Right.
There's no objections.
Are there any parts of the charter, Scott, that that does not cover? Or does it cover everything in our charter?
Well, if you read the charter, when it talks about 30 days enactment, it seems to me to be talking about the criminal ordinances more than every single, I think it was a poor choice of words back then, really, because it looks like it's talking about things that are criminal in nature and not every single possible ordinance. I mean, because we act in ordinances on bond issues, if we don't, certainly don't wait 30 days, we wouldn't be allowed to, so that's, uh, but as I read it, I think it relates mostly, but to clean it up, I think it would be judicious to do that. So I will prepare something on that, on that issue. So that's all, unless there's any questions.
Chandler.
Dan.
Reese.
Did you want to speak on that, please?
Fees?
You know what? I was preparing a presentation and I was looking, I downloaded this and I thought, well, I need to wrap this up tonight because it's not on the agenda, so I didn't sign up to speak because it clearly wasn't on the agenda.
You were talking ordinance 398, the permit fees?
Yeah. Parking permit fees, right. Now, you know, I would have worked a little harder and had one ready, but I did look at this today and said, oh, I've got another two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think council needs to address this because we didn't have a thorough discussion last council meeting. You know, Tim, Tim made a recommendation at the committee meeting that we consider one-half of 1 percent, so that would negate us having to review it every three or four years, just want to go up naturally just because of a percentage rather than a flat fee.
Let me ask you this, Scott, do you feel it's germane to have that discussion now under the comment section of yours? We can have this discussion now, all right?
I think that's, yeah.
Yeah, it's germane to the topic of discussing, so yes.
Yeah, and then Tim said he has a prepared report that he wants to give to us at some point in time for the future.
Yep.
But, but the committee really felt that we need to pull back on what this, what is a thousand percent increase on the fees to, you know, consider maybe a...
The fluctuation, 1.2.
Yeah, to, to pull back a half or, as Tim suggested, maybe a one-half or 1 percent. We had a discussion also that if we do pull back to some degree, when's that going to be effective and what do we do about the people that had to pay the new fee that stands now? And there's some, I think all three of us on the committee felt there ought to be refunds. And that's, that's a real pain for the accounting department and so forth, but we think that's fair. So, you know, those are the discussions we had. And we also talked about if we do it, the new fee goes into effect July, July the 1st. So, I mean, that's, it's a moving target to some degree, but we felt that something ought to be done.
Well, and I'll let you know is that we discussed last week as well that I was going to bring my own fees after I've talked with Vince and we talked to the sister cities. Came up with the average and what I just handed out to you and Katie should get one as well.
Who's next?
Sent one off. What we decided to do, folks, it started out, you guys are talking about taking it back to the $2. Right now, it's at six bucks, I mean, it's at $12. I'm proposing that we take it, cut that in half and make it $6. All we did was double up on the fees from then on. So it's six bucks for anything to $99, $9, uh, $9 for anything to $1,000, et cetera, et cetera. The only other change, it also is in the back, under $51,000 and over, at $6 for every additional $1,000. Capped at $15,000 for any jobs in excess of $2.5 million. All right, so we found the middle ground. We found, we went to 12, it started out at 4, we're looking at 6. I would like you to consider these fees if we want to amend. I also need you to consider, if we're going to talk about amending this, that as far as the appeal process goes within this ordinance, if somebody doesn't like these fees, a contractor for instance, comes in and says they don't like this fee, the appeal process brings it to city council. We believe that it really should go to the housing enforcement board. It does not need to come to city council because then you're adding politics into the discussion where you have regular citizens on your board that can handle this. I would, unless there's any objections, I would ask that Scott also put that in, in this draft, um, the, as far as within the, amending the ordinance, that any appeals of this fee structure go to the housing board of appeals, the housing enforcement board, I'm sorry.
I don't have a problem with that, but the, Rick, you said that we started at 4. I thought we started at 2, the initial.
It wasn't 2, yes.
2:45.
Yeah, and it went to 12, that's why we doubled it up, we cut everything in half.
And Weston and Elkins are at 4.
Yes.
Okay. I, I think Tim, it would be nice to ask Tim to address the one-half of 1 percent issue.
Well, the one-half of 1 percent is 0.5 percent. You're looking at 0.6 percent as opposed to 12 percent. So 6, 5, we're talking on a $30,000 roof that you're only going to do over 30 years, you're talking a difference of $150 to, you know, $175. So a lot of people were trying to say this was a, oh, it's just another tax. No, it's a fee for service and that's what the, the city and the zoning commissioner does. He has all new rules of things he can conquer now. So at the 0.5 percent or 0.6 percent, which is what the mayor's saying at 6 on 1,000, it's either way, but it's that, if you, latest percent, then you never have to adjust that again. You can adjust your minimums and your maximums at any particular time, but that 6 percent or 5 percent or half of 1 percent, it's going to, it's going to just stay in place from now on, so we don't have to address this 0.2 percent from the 80s, come on, you know? It's really, it's a little ridiculous.
And there's also, there's some misinformation out there as to what do you need a permit for versus what you don't need a permit for. And the discussion was that if you're going to, let's say, put carpeting in your house, that, that's not required to have a permit. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Or painting.
But, but there's some, you know, if you have, for example, if you're going to go in and redo your bathroom, if you do it yourself, do you need a permit for that?
And we had suggested to Mr. Smith that perhaps on our city's website, we could say, we could have a recite what you need permits for.
Yeah.
And that way, because most of us don't really know it all.
Yeah, I, I think that needs to be done.
I think our website should easily have, just click what's needed for permits and take a look.
Now, what about the refund issue? I think that should be addressed.
I'm staying out of that one.
I, I personally feel that we should issue a refund to get it down to what the building permit fee would have been had we not changed it. I think we do owe the, the people the refund.
So we need 0.6 percent refund if we're going to go with this?
I, yeah, see, I'd, I'd have to wholeheartedly disagree with that.
But I really want to do the refund, so I'm staying out.
I'd like to take a look at, the first question is, or the analysis is, you don't have any obligation to, the quest, next question is, are you authorized? Is it legal to give the refund? And I would have to take a look, I don't have a strong opinion on it, but I, I don't want to do it if we're not committed, but it might well be that we are.
You can have somebody that paid a fee of thousands of dollars under what we currently have with a new permit fee.
But having...
And then, there are some people that have done that.
Well, that's a question.
And you come through with a revised fee structure. I've, I mean, I've been involved in situations where I didn't want to have to give refunds in certain places where I work, but you try to, you want to be fair, you want to treat people consistently.
But you know, those contractors have passed that on to the consumer already, are they going to give that refund to?
Well, I mean, that's one of the issues.
You're really just giving it back to the... And quite honestly, when it comes, as far as the contractors, and I will reiterate this again, there has not been one complaint. And you're going to look here in a minute at your permit fees and it's part of your consent agenda, take a look at those numbers, folks, there's not much money there. I know it sounds like if you're doing a $2 million project, yes, you're talking substantial, but that's part of the cost. But we have yet, and there have been some huge developments and permits given, and yet not one complaint, not one letter, nothing to anybody at the front, nobody to Vince. Have any of you received a complaint from a contractor on a permit that was issued?
Not until we revise the fees.
Have you two dated? Has there been a letter, correspondence? That's what I'm saying, that's the issue.
And they would have to, if they wanted a refund, you know, they should submit it and write it.
And I think maybe that should go to the housing enforcement board.
Yeah.
The, the two contractors I've talked to, one in town and one out of town, both of them said that it didn't matter to them what the fees were.
Yeah.
So they were, they were going to pass it on to whomever the, the company or the person is getting it done, but they don't care what the fees are. Yeah, but that's a cavalier ad.
That's true. Yes, sir.
There may not be any contractors here to, to complain of something like that, but I think that the city council owes them the responsibility of being, of being responsible for the money rather than just saying, here it is, you know, you, you take it, like it, pass it on to the taxpayer or the, the building owner, whoever it is. I think, I think you as a council have the responsibility to the people, to the contractors in the city, within the city, if you're going to charge these fees, you need to be responsible enough to, to look at and see where they're going to and that they don't, they don't get jammed or something just because we don't come and complain. We shouldn't have to come and complain. You should be responsible for that.
Absolutely.
Yes, what's that? Yes, sir. One thing, some of the, might as well be in my report, but one thing that came out of that committee meeting, that under the current fees we've had in the previous years, with Vince, with his new responsibilities, that we don't collect enough to even pay his salary and they say, oh, we'll take it out of the general fund. Well, I think if you're going to have these fees, you should at least cover the project, if you have the opportunity to cover the cost of the officer you're going to have, plus we have so many projects of derelict buildings and stuff coming up that we have it, we just can't say we might get it from the general fund. If we have this coming in and we can prove our citizens were using this fees to improve the city with these funds, I think we've pretty much covered that on that. But we can't pay the guys' salary off the old fees or something wrong.
But I'm suggesting you go back to the old fees.
Okay, but at one point they were.
At one point they were, exactly.
That's what we covered last week, we're missing the old fees until I came over there.
But Tim, that was not going to be permanent, we would just take it down.
I know, but, but I was just saying that I think you could, given the opportunity, maybe 1.2 was too much, but at 0.5 or 0.6, if you can at least cover the officer salaries and have some for the, you know, abandoned building problems we have, we're going to have to work with. That if we, if we show our citizens that we're using that money towards improving the city, and this is a fee for service, not a tax, it involves individuals maybe one year or so, it's not a big deal.
Right. Well, I, I have, I have an issue from the standpoint that if you have a fee for service, I don't think the person that's renovating his building or whatever should be paying to, to raise the old, the old buildings. That, that should be something done by the city in general.
Well, it's going to be, but you have to have something in the budget to start with and go after it.
I understand, I'm just saying it's not a tick, tick for tag.
Well, so, um, so what, yes, Mary?
I'm just, excuse me, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, I, I would like to know the ordinance number of this, do you remember what it was?
398. Ordinance 398.
Nolan was too...
I'm not done, David.
Okay, go ahead.
My next question is, Andy, is it possible for us to get a, a, a list of how many people paid for these permits and the amount that each person paid?
Yeah, it's, it's on your, it's in your packet.
It's in the packet?
And you've got about eight meetings there, so you can go back to about eight meetings.
All right, I could go back and find it, all right, good.
All right, um, here's what we're doing.
Good.
Which one? Did you have something? I saw a handle on it.
Yeah. I have one question, because you've said that a lot of the contractors here have not complained or anything.
Right.
Have any of the council members considered with any of the local contractors to get their input on that?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes, and the committee. Now, one thing I am disappointed to go is that that committee didn't bring anybody out from Clarksburg, from Bridgeport, from any of the other municipalities to see that work here and work there to compare and contrast the two. That's why I went out and went ahead and found out from those other cities what those numbers were. Those were local contractors that were in that meeting.
But we did have one person that does work in a lot of municipalities at that meeting.
Okay.
I did a little, some of the research I have there, that I, I checked on how many average permits we do per year and I got an email that says it was about 370 and with the population of, same as about 5,683, we're looking at about 6.5 percent of the population are affected in one year on these fees. And that's, if I've got a $30,000 roof on, I'm paying a $150 fee and it'd be 30 years before I'm paying that again, it's not an annual tax as some people like to think.
I think, were there any other questions on this one? Yes?
I just have one simple question, if you don't mind, because I don't understand it all, so I just want to make sure I do. You said that you went out and, and talked to contractors. Was that a committee? Was that one or two people? How many contractors did you go out to see?
Me or the committee? Me personally.
Anybody, I'd like to know who actually, who actually did that? Was it a committee that did that or was it an individual or two individuals? And how many contractors did you actually speak with?
All right, I'll let the committee speak first and then I'll tell you what I did. Committee had Robyn, Tom, and Pam, uh, Tom, Robyn, Dave, and Pam were on that committee with a group of whom else? Do you want to tell them who else was on there?
Well, Tim, Tim Reese wanted to come, so he came. We had the paper there. We had invited a couple contractors, but one, one came. And Bryson Van Ostrm, who's an architect that does a lot of work in different municipalities. And we felt at that meeting, we had the recommendation that the committee should continue or have another committee set up, and that we felt that the, the increased fees were too much, okay? And that we wanted to be competitive with our sister city, so to speak, Weston and, and Elkins, and that the Clarksburg model was not necessarily a very good model. So that was the result of that meeting. And, and many of us had talked to, I mean, I talked to some other contractors that they weren't at the meeting and got their opinions on things.
And to finish up on that, they had their committee that they met the week before. I met with Vince Smith, who's a zoning officer for three different municipalities who do this at three different ones, Ann Moore, Jane Lu, and what's his other one?
Salem.
Salem. And I called the city clerks and the mayors at Bridgeport, Elkins, Weston, and in Clarksburg, they're friends of mine, so those are the numbers I came up with. But technically, we are, even with the amounts that we currently have, are in line with the larger Class IV municipalities. When I drop these down, half of what is now in the ordinance, that put us into an average of all of the, uh, three cities, level three cities.
One's the biggest, which is Ellen Charles.
Class 1, 4, 3, it goes 5, 4, 3.
Number 3.
Number 3.
Correct.
So that's the numbers that I had and I worked with the city, our city administrator and our city zoning officer.
Yeah, they were, they were in attendance too, Mr. Dawson, Mr. Smith were at the meeting.
And their committee as well.
So this isn't on the agenda, so we can't make a decision.
No, we're not making a decision. What we have decided to do is allow, uh...
Scott to do a draft.
Scott to do a draft. And we have three sets of numbers, you have, going back to the initial, the beginning.
Right.
You're going to have a choice on, you're going to have mine, which is the middle compromise, and then you have what's already right now in code, which is the, the 16 or 12 bucks.
And Scott's got one more thing he wanted, he suggested to add to that.
That's right, and while he's at it, that's where I was going next, to look at the appeal process from within that ordinance.
Yes.
appeal process from within that ordinance, so that it goes to the housing enforcement board as opposed to city council.
Exactly.
All right, is there any objections on that? I think we should move on from here, it's been a long one. Thank you very much, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, folks, in your packets, under correspondence, you have a National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program. This is a program we've had within the city for the past six years. It's through the National League of Cities, and you'll get a correspondence in the mail. What it is, is a warranty program for any of their utilities, water lines and sewer lines, so that if you do have a disastrous water issue or sewer issue, then pay through this warranty, then a good percentage of your damages are absorbed from within this warranty. That's something that we're offering to the citizens, you either can take it or don't take it, it's totally voluntary. We encourage it, because as you may well know, the expenses involved in any type of a situation like that can be very drastic, and it can be devastating on your budgets.
I would ask our city engineer to respond to it also.
Respond to what?
What he thinks of this.
Okay.
It's kind of like the extended warranty you can buy on your car. I'm guessing, Mon Power, First Energy is offering the same type program. I think they approached the sewer department about it. I got a lot of calls when the sewers first came out, because it appeared like it was on City Letterhead, and it was being sent out by the city, and what do I need to do with this? It's not being sent out with that, you know, it's not ours, it's purely voluntary. I don't have enough information on it, Dave, you know, I don't know the pros or the cons, I haven't heard any good things, I haven't heard any bad things, you know, I've got the Mon Power still sitting in the house, and they've sent me the fourth last notice, you know, they just want you to sign up for that, but that's just not something I'm ready to do.
But a few years ago, I recall, we got upset as a council, where they never approached the city here. They just sent it out to the residents, and it was very confusing and stuff. You know, it almost sounded like the city was endorsing it for our citizens to get, and that was not the case.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to point out. Was there something in the last council, not the last one, I guess, a month ago, that, or maybe it was in the Water Board, that, you know, they gave us a check, or, you know, for some hundred dollars, Ambie may be able to call.
The Water Board approved the solicitation of that service, it's much like the telephone service, you can pay to have your line fixed, and it's endorsed by the Municipal League of Cities, and the Water Board had approved several years ago for them to solicit. What council would get upset about, and we would get upset about, is they tend to make it look like it's coming from us, so we get the call, so we have to explain that it didn't come from us, it's an independent company. But I haven't heard anything bad, I think it actually has helped a few elderly people who don't have any other means to fix their own lungs, so.
It's totally voluntary. It's $4 a month, $44 something annually, it's a protection service.
You know, Dave, you're going to be responsible from a meter to your house, you know, depending on how far you are from the house, if you're in the city, you're pretty close, if you're on a larger lot, you know, it could be a couple hundred feet, and that's not inexpensive, you know, tractor with a ditch witch, you know, it's just all, you know, you've got to consider all that stuff together, and I just don't have enough.
The likelihood will never happen, but if it doesn't, really.
Well, for an older home, yes, regardless of the couple, whoever is occupying that structure, you knew that, you know, your water lines to your house were put in 70 years ago, fences are pretty good, you know, if you're a young couple just starting out and moving to Buchanan, you may be replacing that service line within the next 10 years. Again, it's individual.
That's right. So, we just put that under correspondence, citizens may get something in the mail, please read through it, they have a website if you're questioning it, but it's something we can offer up to our citizens, particularly those who may not have the budgets if this kind of a situation occurs to you. All right, folks, moving on into our consent agenda, you have in your package, the approval of the minutes from the February 18th regular council meeting. You have approval of the minutes for the February 18th special council meeting on the 2016-17 fiscal budget. Approval of the building and wiring permits, please take a look at those numbers. Approval payment of the bills, and approval of the candidates, part of PCS, Police Civil Service, to interview for probationary police officers on March 8th of 2016 at 6:00 PM here in City Hall. That is an executive session, so that's just for your information to put into agenda.
So, we don't have the names here?
No, you do not have the names.
There's three of them coming?
There's three candidates. As far as the Police Civil Service Commission is concerned, they have a list of eligibles that they have to have. You have to have a minimum of five on that list. You have to have a minimum of three to present the city council as candidates for the officer's position. Police Civil Service Commission sits in and gives them, there are two tests, one's a physical agility test, the other is a written exam, and then there's personal interviews done by the commission itself. Those three phases have been done, as far as the replacement for, not replacement, the, what do we call them? Yes, for the replacement of Officer Stewart going to the parole office. So, that's on the 8th. All right, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll make that motion, sir.
I got a motion by Mr. Pugh, I got a second by Mrs. Sonics. Any discussion on that? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, motion carries. All right, moving on along into our strategic issues for discussion and vote. Scott, we have a second and final reading of ordinance 397, the revised animal care and control ordinance.
Can somebody speak?
Yeah, but we've got to first talk about the second and final reading. Scott, I will get to you, I promise, we've got to let him say what it is first, so everyone else knows, and then I will let council and audience.
Okay, try to be brief on this, we've actually been working on this since about August of last year, some have been working longer than that, I started working on it in September. Initially, we made about four or five significant changes to this ordinance. One was we put in a tethering provision, the second is we removed pit bull from the per se dangerous dogs. Another thing we did was remove the ability to euthanize a dog away from municipal court in accordance with state law, that was the Bluefield case. We also took all the powers and administrative acts of the mayor, and put everything in municipal court. So, those were the significant changes from the existing ordinance. At that time, then we had another committee, and we went back and made some more or less substantive changes. The one significant relative change was we changed the tethering to no more than 10 hours in a 24-hour period. There were some other minor things, and we took out some of the detail and used a little bit more general language. There were 27 different changes, the mayor, you read them at the draft meeting and at the first reading, so we've discussed it at great length, and this thing has been vetted as well as any ordinance I've ever seen, I think, so.
I'm going to open up the questions to the floor, because I saw a young lady with a question.
It's my night to complain, I apologize.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, sometimes, you know, the general public doesn't hear about things that happen here, until it's almost ready to be voted on, and I apologize. I do want to thank Robyn so much for getting me a copy of this ordinance so quickly. Now, I've had to go through this very, very quickly, but I just had a few questions. I want to address you as council, how many of you up there have animals? Oh, wow, okay. So, I just wanted to ask you, I'm looking here, and you probably know it, I don't know if they have a copy of it, but here, under 505.14, feeding of undomesticated or stray dogs or cats. Any of you that have an animal, in this weather we've had recently, if you went into your backyard, and there was an animal that was starving, are you going to tell me today that you would not give it something to eat? Not very humane. Now, I do want to.
Well, it also says, "Any person however may adopt it."
Exactly, and I want to address that.
One point, just real quick, I don't mean to interrupt. That was never changed in anything in the ordinance, that provision, whatever you want to do with it was in the existing order, and we never touched it, so just be aware of that, that's in the old one ordinance.
Personally, and from all dog and animal lovers, I hope you strike this whole paragraph out, I just think that this is the cruelest thing I've ever heard of in my life. Now, it does say, Mary, I do see that, where it says, "Any person however may adopt any stray dog or cat through proper registration of the animal." Now, unfortunately, I must have five strays a day dropped off at my house, because they know they'll be fed, okay? If I could afford to pay all the fees, you know, and I'm not as old as some of the residents around where I live, we can't afford to adopt everyone, that would be like a child. Would you not feed a child, but adopt it so you could feed it? Absolutely, this is the most ridiculous thing I've ever read in my entire life. I mean, I'm not laughing at what you're doing, I'm just thinking this could be a mistake.
I need to clarify for you, that was done in 1981.
Okay.
The reading they did in 1981.
I know it's on the agenda.
The order of commission, see that as a serious issue, because it's common sense, really, is what you're talking about, is common sense, and you know what, technically, I could not feed that dog across the fence, because that would be trespassing, and I know someone in here.
But it doesn't say.
Well, in somebody else's property, that would be trespassing, and if that person sent me go do that, and I know someone who's had that problem, and seen the law, because she wanted to help that poor starving animal, and she went and saw the magistrate because of it. Now, is that kind-hearted, is that humanistic? Absolutely, but the law doesn't see it that way.
Right. However, the way this reads, if one comes up and it's a stray and you feed it, you're breaking the law.
Technically, yes, but it's just technical.
It's also, I guess, law feeds dogs and squirrels.
And Robyn has a response to that, and let me just make sure that you understand that I have three of the committee members here with me, Robyn Keough, Maria Bray, and Alyssa Leaver Mills, they can answer these questions, as well as I can, because it has been a year and a half of almost monthly meetings on this. So, I hope that clarifies a couple of those questions. What else, do you have any other concerns in there?
I do, Ashley, that was my heartbreaker. When I got to that one, I couldn't think about the other ones that I saw before that, because I was so heartbroken, I was going to beat you all up. You know, as a resident of Buchanan, I'm sitting here, and I'm looking up there, and I'm thinking, well, they don't look that bad, and then I read that, and I thought, oh, they're evil.
I'd like to hear Robyn, Maria.
Let her finish first, and then we'll address.
You're going to get me, huh?
No.
What's your name, Bob?
Yeah, can I get your name, please?
We don't carry weapons.
Dorinda Grumbine.
What's up, Rob?
See, you can't spell it anyhow, Dorinda Grumbine is my name.
Dorinda. D-O-R-I-N-D-A.
Uh-huh.
And then what's your last name?
Oh, Lord, Grumbine, G-R-U-B-E-S-N-B-Y-I-N-E, that's what I was afraid of.
That's all right, you'll be famous like everybody else.
Okay. Well, when it comes to animals, I'll die fighting, so, you know, if it has to be that way, it has to be that way.
Good for you.
505.05, okay. Animals running at large. Any owner or keeper of any animals who permits such animals to run at large shall be deemed to have violated the provisions of this ordinance, and shall be subject to the penalties.
Where is that again?
505.05.
505.05.
Now, I do have a problem with that, and I will explain after I tell you this. I have, under that ordinance and the next one, the 505.06, okay? 505.05 is a problem, section one of the next one is a problem, and I've underlined the things that I see as a problem within the city. A lot of people in the city talk, but they don't walk the walk, okay? So, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that this applies for everyone who lives within the city. It says here, and I underlined, for any private property, okay? So, no person earning or having custody of any dog, cat, or any other animal shall permit any such animal to defecate upon any school, including college, campus, church grounds, river, creek bank, et cetera, et cetera, or any private property within that area, okay?
Unless, unless they pick it up.
Right, unless they pick it up.
Right.
Exactly, oh, exactly, I did read that.
I have a huge dog, and I carry big bags.
I wish everybody did. And section two, the owner or person having custody of any dog, cat, or other animal shall be required to properly completely collect and dispose. That is correct. Has this been in effect before, or is this new?
No, that's still, that was original, we've touched that.
It's been there for 20 years.
Does everybody up on that council that has an animal do that?
Yes.
I beg, I beg to differ, I'm sorry. I take care of some property on Third Avenue, sorry, Mayor. However, I have had two complaints in the last month about someone's dog taking and doing just that in their front yard, and then talking to the woman on Third Avenue, and the woman has just blatantly walked away. The dog does not have on leash, it does run up and down the road, so who do I notify about that?
The animal control officer.
Or City Hall.
Or City Hall.
That's what I needed to know.
Pardon?
Well, that goes throughout the whole city.
It is. I'm sorry.
So, were there any other questions to return?
No, I wanted to know who to comment, because these renters do need to protect their yards too.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Robyn, you want to mention something?
I did, I just wanted to comment about the feeding of stray animals, which I think we all here would feed a stray animal, but this ordinance is to address the larger problem that if people just feed the stray animals, that's why you have the over cat population. We really want people to, if you don't want to adopt the animal, take it to the pound, and we have lots of volunteers working very hard at the pound to get those animals into rescues, and as a state law, those animals have to be spayed or neutered.
Does the pound take every one? Because I was told that they weren't taking any more.
The pound has to take the animals.
Okay.
That means that if an animal has been there for too long, something might be put down. But I can tell, wait a minute, in the last several years that we've had a lot of volunteers up there, we've been working so hard, animals are rarely put down that are adoptable. Sometimes you see in the paper the statistics, some owners come in and say, "Put this animal down for me, I can't afford the trip to the vet, it's old, or it's ill, whatever," that's what people do, and it is, we have a licensed euthanasia technician at the pound, they will put it down. But that ordinance, I think the intent of it is just so that we don't have more animals reproducing out, and people, you know, feed them. My mother used to do that, she'd have 20 cats, feeding them, and then Animal Control would come up, pick them up, and, you know, get them fixed, or my mother would get as many spayed as she could, but she couldn't afford to spay 20 cats.
Well, Lord, I think somebody's going to have to put a police officer down at the end of my drive, because I'm going to feed it if it's hungry, I just, you know, I'll break the law, I do apologize right now, but it's not going to happen.
No, this is the one AC in the county, you're not going to get ticketed.
You're going to feed it 10 days in a row.
But we appreciate it if you would call and get them picked up.
And Ma'am's been throwaways, every one of them's been spayed or neutered, every one of them.
When you put the food out, it creates another problem, it attracts.
But if I hadn't done that, I'd never got a hold of them, never been able to take care of them, and now they're there, and they're fine.
It's a line, and if you're habitually putting food out, I mean, I understand, I'm not.
I don't put it out, but if I notice one there and they need something, I'm going to feed it till I get a hold of it.
Every day, he would put a bowl of food out, and we would, we were getting cats from five counties, I really think they were busting in for that.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think there's pretty much a field of discussion on that. I hope you answered your questions. That's what we do here, if you have questions or concerns, unfortunately, at this point, we are so far deep into this, this council, I don't know yet, may not be able to change that, but we can go back and look at that, and revise anything or amend anything in this ordinance that have the concerns. This is an ongoing commission as well, it's a standing commission, so they should be having a meeting quarterly, which would be almost time for a quarterly.
Just two quick points, all those provisions were part of the existing, number one, we already said. Secondly, this is kind of an ASCAP, whatever the name is, the animal society, this is standard language universally in their ordinances, and these are the animal lover people who suggest do not do these things. This language is tried and tested and been everywhere, so it's nothing new that we created here, or that Buchanan even created when it passed the initial ordinance, this is kind of standard ASCAP language, this is the suggestions come in, so it's obviously great to see people love the animals, and of course, we do too, but I just want you to understand that this has been vetted.
But I'd like to make a comment.
Well, let me say something first, and I want to remind the audience and citizens as well, that this ordinance is designed to give us the first steps to actually start enforcing this through our home rule plank of a part-time police officer. This part-time police officer, who doesn't have to go to the Police Civil Service Commission, can work for the police department, can do annual enforcement within the city of Buchanan, give citations for folks who are having their dogs defecating, or unleashed dogs, or anything other issue that's against this, properties also. And it also makes it so that that police officer, while he's not doing that, is also addressing parking issues, which you heard about earlier, with people parking on the sidewalks, or willy-nilly throughout the town. So, ultimately, that's what we've got to do, but I've got to remind citizens, in order for us, not unlike the building code that we passed, that ordinance, we have to have a foundation before we can go out and start enforcing anything. Before we can hire anybody to go out and enforce the rules, we've got to make the rules, and we've got to make them fair, and we've got to make them so that we can actually penalize anyone through that system. And we had issues with this ordinance, and then other issue with the other ordinance, that being the Building Enforcement Code. So, that's what we're trying to do here, ultimately, we can go back, and this is a living document, it can be changed as the whims and cares of the society goes, as far as animals go, but that's ultimately what we want to do with our part-time officer. Mr. Thomas, you have one more comment?
Well, yeah, I want to respond to a little bit of what Dorinda said.
Okay.
I've been sitting on this council for a number of years, and I get more complaints consistently about pets, whether it's a person not picking after their dog on other person's property, that's totally insensitive and considerate. People need to be aware of what they're doing, I think they are, and they don't care, unfortunately. And then stray cats, or cats running around. I mean, I know there are some people that have caught over 20 cats a year, and we have And we have to, you know, it doesn't, I don't care what the ordinance is, if we don't enforce it with a pet control officer, it's not going to do anything. I mean, we can pass all the ordinances we want, but we have to come to the realization that we need somebody maybe four hours a day or five hours a day to do this kind of stuff. Go to the Board of Education, look at, uh, you wouldn't want your children playing at the Board of Ed, that little, uh, lot on Victoria and Smithfield. Um, and, and I live on a highly trafficked, uh, Smithfield Street and it's amazing the number of people. I don't know who they are. I wish I knew who they were, but they don't care. They just let their dogs and they go away. And if you see somebody doing it, if you have a cell phone, take a picture of them. Um, or if you know who's doing it, file a complaint with the City Hall. And we have, we have to do it. And if we don't start doing it on a consistent basis, you know, the ordinance is not going to do anything for it.
David, don't get me wrong. I'm not saying that you should strike the whole thing because I can see, you know, sometimes you have to protect the animals by being a little harder on the, the owners or the caretakers of the animals. So I'm not saying that this is a bad thing. I'm just saying that the wording of that was horrible. It wasn't acceptable and it just not needs to be re, um, revamped a little. I mean, because let me, this is what I'm trying to get at. I only feed a stray if it is starving. If I see a stray and it is starving, dog or cat, if I see an animal that's loose, now I'm not talking about in someone's yard or anything like that because that is strictly against the law. But what I am saying is I am never, ever in my lifetime going to have somebody hungry or, or that's a, that's a, that's a living, breathing creature of God. It's the same as a child. If you would not let a child starve, you are certainly not going to let an animal starve. So in that case, would, would your officer find me? If it was sick, I would take it to the vet.
I'll make one other suggestion. I think, I think this ordinance should be passed as is.
As is.
I think we should have the, the, I mean, that's my opinion. The, the, we need to continue with the Pet Control Commission. As the mayor said, it's a working document. There may need to be some adjustments. I don't like that, uh, if you are cruel, intentionally cruel or abusive to an animal, you get a second chance. I think that's ridiculous.
No, I don't think you should.
If, if you find, if the pet control officer knows or a police officer knows somebody's being abusive and cruel to an animal, they, that animal should be removed. I don't care. I give them 10 days or five days to court. Take the darn animal into protective custody.
I think if the person did to the animal, someone should do to them.
Yeah. So this, this is not a gold proof ordinance, so to speak. There's going to have to be some changes.
But there will be exceptions and there will be leeway.
There ought to be discretion.
And we will, we will make announcements and I hate to interrupt Dave, but we've heard.
A pointer to the Pet Control Commission.
Um, yes, we will. And those are advertised, um, the year and a half, each one of our meetings were advertised about it. Uh, it was in the paper. It was all over. But if you will get just your information, this is, what's your name? This is. Mrs. Grumbine, we will, uh, if you will get us your information, we will get you on the email list for any of those discussions as far as the Animal Care and Control Commission is concerned. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Um, having said that, um, I don't think that was a motion, Dave, but I would entertain a motion to, uh, a motion to approve upon second and final ordinance 397, revised Animal Care and Control Commission.
So moved.
I got a motion. I got a second by Mr. Pew. Any discussion on that, council?
I think.
One thing? Any discussion?
You called for question. Um, so I have a call for question for Mr. Pew. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
I want to, I want to thank the people that were on the Pet Control Commission for all the hard work they did. And we know there's going to have to be some revisions fairly. I think there's a couple of revisions that need to be done. Hopefully in the next three to six months and I'll make those recommendations. So, um, and will the, will the same people be on the Pet Control Commission?
Yes.
Okay. Think we add people?
Yes, actually I can add people.
Okay, we should do that. And the real issue, we have got to deal with a pet control officer.
Yeah, that's not something the city's ever done before, except for a feral cat or a cat warden. All right, having moved on from there, um, I want to thank the commission as well. It's been a long road. We got something down. Now we can move on and start really tweaking it.
Can we recognize them again? One last time. The, the.
Commission member?
The commission members, please.
Yes. Miss Alyssa Liger Mills.
And, um.
Voting member.
Robin Keo.
Robin Keo, all three of you.
I'm sorry, Wes.
Stand up and be recognized.
Stand up.
Here, let's get your picture.
Yes.
Why don't we get your picture with Scott?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, stand over there by the podium.
Scott.
Me?
All right, don't you show the committee can list. The commission can work. It only took a year and a half to do it, but it can work.
Thank you all for working with us. This has been a long call for all of us.
It really has. I kind of had not.
But stay, stay with it and we, we'll need to make some revisions. I've got several, I want to suggest. Hey, we can meet at my house.
I could use a.
Moving on, moving on, folks. We've got something to go. We got resolution 2016 dash oh four, the Transportation Alternative Grant, Gateway West. Scott.
Uh, that's really Jay.
No, it's really you.
Um, Scott, it's all for concern, resolution 2016 dash oh four, Transportation Alternative Grant, Gateway West is mature and ready for approval, correct?
Yes, sir. It is ready.
All right. Does everyone on council understand what resolution 2016?
Yes.
All right. And I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 2016 dash oh four.
Second.
W call.
That's right. So.
You got a motion and a vote?
I got a motion and I got a second. Now I need to roll call. Ms. Ambie.
Council, Council, Perry?
Yes.
Council, Thomas?
Yes.
Council, Pew?
Yes.
Council, Simon?
Yes.
Council, Alva?
Yes.
Mayor?
You don't need mine. All right, resolution 2016 dash oh five, a sudden lease agreement. That is in your, um, package as well.
Yes.
Uh, Scott, is this ready and mature for voter?
It is. Uh, just a couple of real quick critical aspects. Seven-year lease, uh, years one through two, eighty-four hundred dollars annually, years three through five, twelve thousand dollars annually, and years six through seven, fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars annually, uh, effective April first to June thirtieth, I believe, of 2023. Uh, just a head-in lease for where they situate their equipment.
North Buchanan.
North Buchanan Water Tank Hill. So that's, that's.
All right. So we have a, a resolution 2016 dash oh five, ready for maturity. Uh, would entertain a motion for the sudden lease agreement?
So moved.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Have we taken care of everything having to do with Water Tank Hill as far as all the precautions with the fencing and everything? And, and suddenly does understand what they can and cannot do?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, we made that very clear. You know, we increased the, the fees, which are nice. But they now have access to their equipment via a separate mangate. They cannot access our property in any way, shape, or form. Um, you know, if, if they did like they were, you know, doing some work on the tower, they've got to approach us and get our permission. But right now to access their equipment, they can only get through their own mangate.
And what we do about the right-of-way agreement with the, uh, that they put in on the property without asking?
It's still being worked on.
Still being worked on?
Has nothing to do with this lease, though, right? Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this?
Question.
I was just going to do that.
Uh, all in favor of resolution?
Got a roll call.
Roll call?
Roll call.
I'm kidding there. Roll call, Ms. Ambie.
Council, Alva?
Yes.
Council, Simon?
Yes.
Council, Pew?
Yes.
Council, Perry?
Yes.
Council, Thomas?
Yes.
All right, um, motion passes. Uh, resolution 2016 dash oh six, the River Walk Lighting Project. I think we discussed that earlier as well. We did as a part of.
There's someone that's right in there.
I will get there in a second. Let me finish explaining it. In order to do the River Walk Lighting Trail, we have to have a resolution. In order for us to commit 20% before they give their 80%, we have to have the resolution. Mr. Gygax, you have the force, sir.
The astronomy teacher has the planetary shows and she likes to take the classes out where it's relatively dark to use her telescope. Since they put the LED lights around the campus, it, about the only dark spots she has is over there along the river. So before you, we start putting a lot of lights around there, let's check with the people that teach the astronomy and planetary in their college.
So noted. Uh, take that number advisement. Thank you very much. All right. So I have resolution 2016 dash oh six, River Walk Lighting Project. Uh, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, uh, I need a roll call, please.
Council, Alva?
Yes.
Council, Simon?
Yeah.
Council, Pew?
Yes.
Council, Perry?
Yes.
Council, Thomas?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you very much, folks. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now down to comments and announcements on very fast, right? And we're going to start off to my far right with Mrs. Alva. Mrs. Alva, you got any comments or?
No.
All right, then we have Mrs. Perry.
Only thing I have is, um, I am having my second meeting, uh, the Fourth of July Committee meet, uh, next Monday, uh, March the seventh at 5:30 here. And I'm looking for committee, people to come on my committee. It would really be appreciated. That's it.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Pew?
Uh, the only thing I want to stress is one of the same thing I said this afternoon at the Create Buchanan meeting is that here in Buchanan, people say there's nothing to do. Well, let's see. Wednesday nights at Do Re Mi, they have an open mic series where you can come and pick and play or read poetry or one little gentleman did some Shakespeare. Uh, it's very, uh, it's actually calming and reminds me of the old time coffee houses we used to go to when we were kids way back then. On Thursday nights, uh, at, uh, the LaScalle Music Theater, uh, next to the Three Quarter Cafe, there's, uh, there's bluegrass music for two hours. It's free to the public. Both of these things are free to the public. The 88 Lounge has live music and everything. And soon coming up, we're going to have the, uh, Festival Fridays on every Friday night from, uh, June through September with live music and entertainment. So, um, I'd like to, like to remind people that, um, you know, stay in the next couple of cold days, that come out when it gets warm and, uh, enjoy Buchanan and what we're going to have to offer in the springtime and everything. God bless. Thank you, Mr. Pew. Mrs. Simon.
Um, I would just like to thank everyone that came out tonight. I'd like to thank Robert for bringing up, uh, the issue about not being able to hear in here. I've always been an advocate for the, uh, uh, disabled, especially for hearing. Uh, I served for about eight years on the West Virginia Board of Hearing Aid Dealers and there is so many people that have little problems. So thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Mrs. Simon. Mr. Thomas?
Well, you know me, I got a couple comments. The, uh, mayor, do you want to sort of summarize what we did on our budget meeting and wait till the next council meeting for Michael to give that report?
Let Michael give that report, sir.
Okay, because he probably would have done that to see. And, um, I would ask people, um, I know there's some individuals that put signs out for campaigning. I would ask the citizens to be respectful and not remove those signs. I've, I've heard that has happened. And be respectful on that. Um, in regard to the, uh, I want to thank again the Pet Control Commission with the year and a half work they did. And it's not a perfect document, but, uh, you know, we, we need to move forward on it. And also be very careful, um, on what you read on Facebook sometimes. A lot of misinformation is out there and, and if you have questions, um, call up the city council person or the mayor or, uh, Michael Doss. And that's important. And I also think that the, uh, I want to thank groups like Create Buchanan, the Arts Alliance and so forth. It's really important to enhance the quality of life in our city, in our town. I think that's happening. I appreciate that very much. So y'all have a nice weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
And in response to that, call up the city council, is there a directory with your names and phone numbers anywhere? Well, I can't find a lot of them in the phone directory.
It's on the web page.
I think that's a good idea. I think after, I talked to several people.
I think after, uh, the election.
Yours is in there, by the way.
Pardon?
Your phone number's in there.
It is?
In the phone book?
Phone book.
So it's mine, but I'm never there.
Joe, you've got a direct line to mine.
I am there, yes.
I couldn't find them.
It's on the web page.
Yeah, it's on the website.
But some people don't use web pages. You know, they don't use computers and stuff. But I, I think after this next election, it'll be good to have a little piece of paper that talks about who the council are and what their numbers are. All right, the mayor.
You got my number. I'll give you the rest of them.
Yeah, I got yours because your wife is in my class of 65. We have a lot of directory for the people in the class of 65.
She's going to be angry with you now.
All righty then. Uh, Mr. Thomas?
Everybody.
Thank you very much. Um, I need to thank the Animal Care and Control, huh? Yes, I got that down. I've got a couple of comments. I've got a couple of comments.
Can I make one later?
We're not going to be able to stop you anyway.
I don't know about that. The only thing I want to say is with the Animal Care and Control Board, I personally have a project and most of you've already heard me mention this. When my husband, who's serving with military in Afghanistan right now, when he gets back, I want him to educate everybody about the trap neuter release program that they have working over there. The more I've heard about it, the more I really like it. And I would like to see something like that come to Buchanan because it would help in the number of strays that we have running around. It would also ensure the public that the ones running around would be at least vaccinated and vetted and altered.
Thanks very much. I agree with that as well. Uh, that is something we need to look at now that we've got this out of the way as we go into looking at enforcement. We can do that. All right, a couple of things. I want to thank the Animal Care and Control Commission very much as well. March 27th, the sunrise service at the Easter for with Chapel Hill down here at Jawbone Park. Please be there. April is Make It Shine Month. This is the time for us to clean up our, our yards and, uh, our, help out your neighbors who may not be able to get out to do that as well. I'll have my kids out helping out in the neighborhood. Uh, we do have a newsletter that will be going out that will also be putting, talking about the sidewalk program. It'll be talking about the facade grant. It'll be talking about the grant stuff. We'll have that out at the beginning of April. Uh, well, I can't wait to see the bocce ball down at Jawbone with the new sidewalks. That'll make the walking along Madison Street much easier than out in the street. And, um, I'm going to make a suggestion as we can talk about animals. Um, I've heard this issue with the geese over at North Jawbone Park. I would ask that our park committee look at turning that into a dog park. Um, I don't think it is safe for the kids to be out there and all of the goose.
I absolutely agree.
I think there may be health issues there. You want to get rid of the geese over at North Buchanan Park, turn it into a dog park.
We will get rid of the other thing that hurt enough.
If we have to find another place to have a soccer field, so would it be? But quite honestly, um, if we want to do something over there, because those birds know that that's their house now and they're not going anywhere unless, and people have their animals over there. Let's turn it into a dog park. It's perfect size. All right. So that's all I have. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for West Virginia Code six dash nine dash eight. No, I don't care. I'm going to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, there you go.